... down, when it rains it takes them with it.
It's kind of on that same line.
Maybe it's coming to your house, I don't know.
I'd like to call the Maumell City Council meeting to order. The first order of business is invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I'm gonna lead us in that tonight. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this community in which we serve, Lord, and we thank you for these council members and other elected officials that are here to, to serve the community, Lord, and give up their time and, and to serve their fellow human beings, Lord. We ask you to be with us tonight as we make decisions and give us your wisdom and your insight, Lord. We ask you to be with our community as we're dealing with issues around the community, various things, Lord, with individuals and all, Lord. We ask you to be with those and bless them and touch them as only you can. We'd also ask you to be with our first responders as they serve our citizens, keep them safe and from harm's way as they protect our citizens, Lord. Be also mindful of all of our military personnel that are serving our country overseas, Lord. We ask you to be with them and bless them and protect them and be with their families if they're separated, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We didn't have any special guests or announcements, but I had a proclamation down under the FYI, and I got notified today that Mr. Douglas Shackelford was gonna be here tonight, and so I, with the council's permission, I'd like to move the Imagine a Day Without Water proclamation up to the special guests and announcements, and I will read that and present that to Mr. Shackelford, if that's all right with y'all.
Go for it.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine, sorry.
All right, I may have to take water, it's pretty long. So, Mayor's proclamation, whereas recognizing the Imagine a Day Without Water campaign being held October the 10th, 2018, which is an organized effort to highlight the critical importance of reliable access to clean water in our lives and the investment in infrastructure that is necessary to protect this valuable resource, whereas the infrastructure that brings water to and from homes and businesses is essential to the quality of life and economic vitality of Maumell, and whereas Americans on average utilize 260 gallons of water per household per day, and whereas Central Arkansas water maintains 2,500 miles of pipeline and serves about 450,000 people, and whereas water crises across the country ranging from contaminated water to drought to flooding show the severe impacts of what can happen to the public health and well-being of a community without access to clean drinking water, and whereas droughts and flooding and other related challenges put pressure on water systems that are ill-equipped and ill-prepared to manage such extreme events, and whereas utilities nationwide are grappling with aging infrastructure and lack reliable revenue and funding to maintain systems, let alone upgrade their systems, and whereas one-fifth of the US economy would grind to a halt without a reliable and clean source of water, and whereas managing water responsibly is critical to our nation's public and environmental health and to a high quality of life through the economic commerce, power generation, and recreation, and whereas investing in our drinking waters, drinking water systems will secure a bright and prosperous future for generations to come, and whereas innovation in water conservation and water reuse will drive job growth, economic development, and establish a 21st paradigm of water management in the United States, and whereas for each job created in the water sector, another 3.68 jobs are added to the national economy, and for every dollar spent on infrastructure improvements, the US generates $6 in returns, and whereas different regions face different water challenges, so the solution to strengthen our drinking water and wastewater systems must be locally driven, but reinvestment in our water must be a national priority. Now therefore be it resolved by Maumell Mayor Michael Watson that the City of Maumell and Maumell City Council recognizes that water is essential to the quality of life and economic competitiveness and acknowledges the importance of educating the public about the value of water through the Imagine a Day Without Water campaign. Further resolved that the City of Maumell is dedicated to investing in safe and reliable water infrastructure and calls on all of our federal partners to bring much-needed funding and innovation to protect and restore our critical water infrastructure. Now therefore I, Michael Watson, Mayor of the City of Maumell, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the state of Arkansas, do hereby proclaim October the 10th, 2018, as Imagine a Day Without Water in the City of Maumell, and I urge all fellow citizens to join me in helping to promote efforts to educate others about the value of water and to protect and restore our critical water infrastructure. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Maumell to be affixed this first day of October in the year of our Lord 2018. Signed, Michael Watson, Mayor of Maumell.
Thank you, Mayor Watson, member Watson, members of the council. I appreciate you letting us come out tonight, appreciate this proclamation. Central Arkansas Water is extremely proud to be serving the City of Maumell and its citizens now. I hope that you guys have been satisfied with the product that we've provided so far. We will continue to work as hard as we can to ensure you have the best water in Arkansas, which I'm proud to say that you do. So again, we're very happy to be a part of this community, and thank you again for this proclamation.
Thank you, Ms. Shackelford. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the September 17th regular meeting. You have a copy of those minutes in your packet. Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
To approve?
Second.
The motion is second to approve the minutes of September the 17th. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment. I have no public comment cards on agenda items or non-agenda items tonight, so we'll move on to the next item, which financial statement report review is done at the second meeting of each month. The next item is department reports, which are done at the first meeting of each month, and tonight we have the Public Works Director, Mr. Mike Hogan, here that's going to give you kind of an update on some pathways and some other projects that they've got going in Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Mike Hogan, Public Works Director, 600 Cogdill Drive. First off, I was gonna remind everybody about the October fall cleanup, October the 8th through the 19th, and then I was looking on the agenda and the mayor's gonna talk about that.
Go ahead.
But anyhow, if you got stuff to get rid of, it's a good time to take advantage of this service. We just don't accept batteries or anything with freon or tires. That being said, I think I'll just move on to the street department and the street overlays. I know that was Councilmember Scott's concern. Last week I got a purchase order approved for the street overlays, the 300,000. There's only two streets on it, and I know you're thinking, why is there only two streets? But one of them is Woodland Drive, and it goes from Edgewood Drive in front of the community center, 3,669 feet, which is about eight tenths of a mile roughly, all the way down to North Odom. This street is 37 feet wide, so it's long and wide, and we're gonna have to mill this street four inches. Because it's been overlaid so many times, we've gotta get it back down to curb level to where the curbs are actually doing their job and draining to the drop inlets. The other street is about another 1,500 feet on Stone Ledge going up the hill. I guess that'd be on the south end of Woodland Drive, and that's gonna eat up about all we've got in the street budget. So, the walk paths, we've got 25,000 in general fund and 25 in the street to take care of these. I've got estimates, actually 80, about $85,000 worth of estimates on cart paths. I've narrowed it down to two areas, one from Dan U Drive all the way down to Arnold Palmer, which is roughly 1,200 to 1,500 feet, and this will be milled down and overlaid with two inches of asphalt. The next one is gonna be over at Lake Willistee. I don't know the total footage on that, but it's in a lot of pine trees, it's hard to get machine and equipment into. So we had decided to mill down the rough spots, crack seal, and then put a seal coat over that to try and cover more area and get more footage out of it. So hopefully that'll extend the life of some of these areas. With that being said, that's $50,000 worth of, you know, path rehabilitation, and I've got enough to, 2019 budget comes about, what I've already got estimates on, maybe we can get purchase orders on them fairly quick and go ahead and get those on the agenda as well. Other than that, we've just been bumping along. We've got a generator that we're trying to get online. This has been an ongoing deal. Hopefully we can get it done before the end of the year, before inclement weather sets in, so we can have fuel and stuff for the city. So that's about all I've got. Y'all got any questions?
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You said that you were redoing Woodland Drive. Does it not continue across? So you're not gonna do that portion from basically the football fields or the soccer fields?
No, it's not as bad as the Woodland Drive.
From Odom to Edgewood?
Yeah, from, from Odom to Edgewood, and the reason it's not as bad is that area hadn't been, well, that too. Woodland's been overlaid so many times, the cracks going across it, it's pretty rough. It's got the stutter bumps that go all the way down, and then on the other side of Odom, going toward the ball fields, it's not nearly as bad and doesn't have the cracks in it.
Okay. I just was curious, because, you know, it's all one street.
Right, right.
But I understand.
Right.
Thank you.
And that's something that we could probably crack seal and possibly even do a seal coat later on, 'cause I don't think the asphalt is bad in that area.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I'll ask you a little bit about overlay. The, you had mentioned, you and I were just talking one time, said Arnold Palmer was beginning to float to the top of your list. Do you have any, any thoughts on that, or when that might be, within the next couple of years or something?
We'll have to look in it and see. I know that's another wide street. It may be one of those years when, if we do that, it'd just be that one road only. But I do know that it's, it's getting alligatored up and, you know, yeah, fairly bad.
I had one other question, as far as folks putting items out for a cleanup day. What, what is the timeframe on that, if they're wanting to put something out and they're gonna be out of town or something like that? How, how early can they put something out?
If it's for their area that's being picked up, you know, get it out by 7:00 AM that morning, or, you know, a day or two before if possible.
Okay, so, so there's no, no penalty of, say, they put it out, say, three days before?
Most people don't wanna put it out because it kills their grass, but winter time coming on, you know.
There's no, there's no limitation?
Say, get it out for three or four days. I wouldn't do it a week in advance. I think neighbors start complaining and...
You have code.
And code enforcement's aware of what's going on, so they know it's fall cleanup, so they're not gonna tag somebody that sits a couch out there at the street for, on Saturday, and then it's not picked up till Monday or Tuesday, so.
Okay.
It just, but it's like you says, the neighbors may complain, but the, the code enforcement's not gonna cite somebody.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Councilmember Williams?
So you're talking about the, the paths at Lake Willistee. Where exactly are you talking about? I know there's pine trees, well, there's that path that goes in actual woods. You're not talking about that one, are you?
Yes, from where the bunker is, where they, the firemen use. Not all the way to the Veterans Memorial, but right there close to the bunker, they'll start there, and then they'll go up into the woods, and it kinda branches off into a cart path that just, it's kinda like a circle. It ends up at the other bunker that has the openings on both ends, and, but yeah, most of that area up in there is, is what we're talking about doing.
Good deal, thank you.
Councilmember Scott?
And you're hoping to have all this finished by the end of the year?
On Woodland, Redstone is doing a water relocation up there. I would like for them to get out, do their final inspection before we do the street overlays up there, because I don't want one job overlapping the other, you know, if we can prevent that, I think that would be good. So I don't know the timeframe of when they're supposed to do the final walkthrough and finish up on that. So I'm guessing probably maybe toward the end of this year they can start the overlays, but it may be the first of, first of the year.
Thank you.
And on the cart paths, they might be able to start on them fairly quick, so, you know, they could probably start, you know, doing them, and then maybe that'll be finished up on Woodland.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions for Ms. Rogan? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next item is a procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. First item of unfinished business, we have the third reading ordinance number 961 is amended, establishing speed limits. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 961, an ordinance declaring the speed limit in residential rear access alleyways, alleys.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we accept ordinance 961.
We have a motion and a second to accept ordinance number 961. Is there a discussion on that motion? Councilmember Scott?
I initially was not in favor of this ordinance, because as Chief Williams said, there are other ways of enforcing speed through a couple of methods that police are allowed to use that gives them a little bit of discretion, and secondly, that it's difficult to even go 10 miles an hour without your foot riding the brake the whole time, so I thought we're putting a, an ordinance on the books that we don't expect people to obey. So I just was troubled by that aspect of it. And actually, the real, the reason this came up was because a couple of residents complained about one particular individual who was exceeding the speed limits. But then, Mr. Todd of the Planning Commission spoke and did remind us all that we didn't have anything for this classification of streets, and even though it doesn't apply to streets that are not under city control, I think it, it's, it sets a good tone for that type of driving in those sorts of situations, and also prepares us for the future in case we have other rear access alleyways. So, all that said, I'm gonna vote yes.
Okay. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I wanted to commend Councilmember Holt for trying to do this, and it, you know, trying to do something for his residents and try to keep down speeding and so on, and I've wrestled with it back and forth, but I think I'm gonna come down on, on the side of Chief Williams and just kinda say we've, we've got enough stuff on the books, and so I'll, I'll be voting no tonight, but again, thank, thank you for thinking about your constituents.
All right, any other discussion? Not. Madam City Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan? Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
No.
The motion passes six to two. Next item on the agenda is under new business, and it's titled, appoint new member to the Maumell Public Facilities Board. It really should say confirm, is what it should say there. The, the Maumell Public Facilities Board met on September the 26th, and they voted to recommend Ms. Schluderman to the expired facilities board seat with the term ending of May of 2023. And then basically, I accept their recommendation, but it's up to this council to confirm it. So that's how it's written in the ordinance and all that. So, but Ms. Schluderman is here tonight, if y'all would like to meet her for just a minute, and we can have her come up and just say a few things about her, and I joked with her, I said, you know, I said, you're the only one, so I think you'll get approved tonight, but, but we're glad to have her, because we've been trying to fill this vacancy for a while, and we appreciate her applying for the vacancy and just willingness to serve on the public facilities board. And Ms. Schluderman, if you want to just tell the council a little bit about yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Cheryl Schluderman. I've been a CPA for 20 years, practicing mainly in public accounting. In the last five years, I've worked for the Arkansas Development Finance Authority as the Vice President for Finance and Administration, so I'm very familiar with, with bonds and the other activities that will be presented to the Maumell Public Facilities Board. I've been a resident of Maumell for over 15 years, and I love it, and I just finally wanted to get involved, so, anyway.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Schluderman, I think I said that right. Two things, one, you have a very impressive resume, I compliment you.
Thank you.
You've spent a lot of your life preparing for this sort of thing. And second, I want to thank you for volunteering your time to help on this, it's an important position.
Well, thank you.
Make a motion to accept, Ms. Schluderman?
Hang on, Councilmember Mosley?
I was basically gonna say the same thing he just did, but yeah, thanks, thanks for getting involved. We, we need some great new, high caliber people, and you've got a great resume, so thanks, thanks for getting involved.
Thank you very much.
I would like to make a motion to...
Confirm.
To confirm.
Okay, all right. We have a motion to confirm the appointment and a second. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you very much, Ms. Schluderman, and you're welcome to leave anytime you want to. You can stick around if you want to, so. And sure, Tony, Tony Wilson will be contacting you, he's the chairman, and so he'll get with you on the, any, their next meeting and that sort of thing, so. Next item is Resolution Number 2018-30, a resolution to certify the taxation rate for the tax year 2018. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maumell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2018-30, a resolution certifying to the Plaski County, Arkansas County Clerk, the rates of taxation to be levied by the City of Maumell on taxable real and personal property within the City of Maumell, Arkansas, for the tax year 2018 and for other purposes.
Okay, there's no change to our tax rate, this is exactly what it was last year, but we have to do this before the end of October, so that the quorum court can take it up in November, so that the tax rates are all set before the end of the year, so that when the tax collector sends out the bills, everything is correct and everything. It's just a standard procedure that we do, but there is no increase in our city sales, our city real property and personal property taxation.
I make a motion that we accept Resolution 2018-30.
We have a motion and a second to accept, or to adopt Resolution 2018-30. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is a presentation by the elected official salary committee, and Mr. Jeff Van Patton, I think, is gonna do that for the committee, so would be happy to hear from you at this time, Mr. Van Patton.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, thank you for this opportunity to once again serve on this committee and had the privilege and pleasure to serve also with, with Alderman, Ken Saunders, and Marion Scott, and I think also, Scott, remember, Scott, there you are, is here, and I don't, I'm seeing if anybody else in our committee's here, but we had a great committee, we met three times. The, the goal here of our group was to come up with a recommendation to the council and the mayor for the, going forward, the mayor's salary, city clerk's salary, city attorney's salary, and city council members' salary. And, and as a part of that process, what we did was, we talked about creating or identifying peer groups, peer group cities, so that we could compare the City of Maumell, not only on population, but also other factors. And I must say, Alderman, Saunders, and Scott, Grummer did a lot of statistical analysis, which was very helpful to our, our committee and, and in this process. In going through this, we came up with the recommendations that are summarized on your, on the cover page you're looking at here, and then in the inside pages, you'll see each different position and sort of how those positions, new salaries are ranked, you know, the new recommended salaries. And if I may, starting off with the mayor's salary recommendation, it was pointed out by our, by our trusty human, human resources person, Jared, there, that the present mayor's salary was 81,600, plus the mayor gets an auto allowance of 6,500, and so our recommendation was, after going through this, comparing it to peer, the peer cities that you see here, Cabot, Perrigal, Sherwood, Jacksonville, Cersei, Russellville, Bella Vista, and Bryant. We decided to combine those two numbers, the 81-6 and the 6,500 auto allowance, into just a salary of 81, 81. That number would not be a, an increase over the present budget, so, but it, but it will simplify things, I think, going forward, and I think Jared was real comfortable with the fact that, that by simplifying things going forward, it would, it would really help, well, it would just help a lot of things and make a lot of sense. So that, that's, that was our recommendation. If you'll notice, looking at the peer cities, our new salary is a little bit upper middle, is where the ranking among these, about these 10 cities. It's just slightly less than Cabot, Perrigal, and Sherwood, but, you know, it's, it's above Jacksonville, Cersei, and Russellville, Bella Vista, and Bryant. And the goal here was not to be the highest paying necessarily, but it was to, to make the position salary competitive, and, well, and my attitude was better than competitive, you know, kind of, kind of give a little, little on the upper end, so that the position would always be a, a desirable and sought-after something that someone, if someone wanted to apply in the future. And so that's, that's kinda how we came up with that. But to, to reemphasize, 'cause I know several of you on the council here, and many of you have a real strong eye for the budget, this was for, this is... this was for, this is a neutral budget thing here for the mayor's salary. So, any questions on that? Moving on to the city clerk. We, our peer cities for the city clerk position was Cabot, Mammell, Cersei and Perrigal. Similar sized cities and other attributes. And what we decided to do here, after thoroughly going over and looking at the numbers, was incorporate an increase of $4,680 for the city clerk position, which would bring it up just a little bit, but still very much in line with the other peer cities. And, I mean, you can see, it's a little more than Cersei, more than Perrigal, but not quite as much as Cabot. But competitive, maybe a little more than competitive. And that was our goal and our idea. The previous salary was 57,120. So this is an increase of 4,680, our recommendation for this position. I'm going to move on to the city attorney position or salary. After thoroughly going over this, and again, the same, the peer cities was Cabot, Mammell, Perrigal and Cersei. And after going over this, comparing full-time city attorney positions versus part-time, because we found in our analysis and our review, that not every city has a full-time attorney. And so, we were wanting this to be, you know, comparing full-time positions. And again, we want this to be a position and a salary for this position that people are wanting or, you know, desiring to apply for. So after reviewing this, we decided to recommend an increase of $4,250, which with the previous salary was 85,000. And so, the new salary we are recommending was 89,250. This is going forward. I'm going to move on to the last position and the one that definitely caught my eye is the city council salaries position. And first of all, I know every one of you are here because you love Mammell. You're not doing it for the money, no question about that. And because you love Mammell and you have a, want to volunteer and you really care about the community. So, the salary had been 6,000 a year for a long time, so our committee, and it wasn't Ken Saunders and it wasn't Marion Scott, it was myself and others, but our committee, we thought to keep it competitive in our peer group, and you can kind of see where it ranks in this peer group, we recommended a $100 a month increase, which would bring the salary up to $7,200 a year. We thought that was more than fair and considering all the many budget meetings and phone calls and just all the other stuff you all had to deal with. So that took it from 6,000 to 7,200, but again, another way to look at that is $100 a month more. So, that is our committee's recommendations. The one thing I would like to add, and I'm going to lean over to Jared for confirmation on this, but I think one of the questions that our group asked was what overall effect does this have on our budget, these recommendations? And for going forward, these new salaries, some of them are neutral, but some are an increase. And so, Jared, correct me here, but I believe that the net effect of this for our budget going forward was somewhere in the neighborhood of $19,000 a year, it was below 20. And that was after Jared calculated in FICA and FUTA, SUTA, all the other things, you know, that you had to go into that with a salary in the increase. Am I right? Below 20,000, net effect to the budget going forward. That's our presentation. If anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to take them.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did you, taking into thought of the retirement that we need to prepare for on some elected officials when you're thinking about the net effect? I know it's not, it's not going to affect the current sitting elected officials, but we do have to always keep that in mind. I know we remind ourselves every time we come to budget and that we have to have that, you know, prepared, whether we have it earmarked or not. So that is going to affect it, you know, a little bit.
We did take that into account and Ken or Marion, either one of you want to?
We, well, we did, we talked that at budget time, we need to be forward looking and Jared had some ideas, one of which was maybe establishing annuities or-
Can I do that?
Or something, or something that, you know, that identified money. As soon as someone reaches 10 years, the city should be earmarking in some way money toward the retirement of individuals. Now, heretofore, we have only had one individual who were paying and that's Ms. Masters, who'd been with the city for 25 years. The mayor will be eligible and Joshua Clausen, I believe, when he reaches the age of 60, will be eligible. So, so far, you know, we're looking at three people, but the city does need to start thinking about how can we earmark that money and get that in our capital plan or in our operating plan going forward. So it did generate quite a bit of discussion and we'll talk about it more at budget time and what the allowable opportunities are. And we're hoping that Mr. Azon will have something for us by that time.
Well, and that's all I really wanted to ask, is that it was discussed in that process, because it's sometimes, you know, it's we have a tendency to just look at the problem instead of the whole picture, so, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just real quickly, on the point of retirement, I think we made the caveat here that this was an elected official's salary task force. So we weren't actually looking at the retirement benefits or how to fund them, how to do things like that. This was strictly located directly on the salary. So to answer the question, it was a consideration, but it wasn't the primary effect of this task force to look at.
And I appreciate that, I just know that whenever we raise the salary, then that's going to raise the retirement, of course.
Definitely, yes, that was a concern that was-
It needs to be brought up a little bit, but as far as planning for it, yeah, no, I wouldn't expect that.
Definitely, thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Van Patton? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good job.
And what will have to happen is these salaries are set by ordinance, so there will have to be an ordinance brought forth. So I guess the question is, we're going to need some consensus from the council that we bring these forward, because we're going to have to, in order to make it effective about the time, or we could pass the budget first and then bring it in, but around the first of November to get three readings in, if the council approves the budget the first meeting in December, you'd have to start the ordinance readings on the first meeting in November to coincide on the third. Or you could let the ordinance lapse to the last meeting in December. But that's going to be pretty tight on getting changes made in HR and all that, but-
You mean the last meeting in November?
Well, no, you could do it the last meeting in December, because they don't go into effect till January. You'd approve your budget in the first meeting in December, but then the ordinance would be voted on the last meeting in December.
Okay.
I mean, it's a chicken or egg type thing, kind of, I mean, you're going to, if you pass the ordinance, the budget's either got to be revised or it's got to be approved at that level, so, so that's what you're going to deal with. I will mention one thing, and I'm glad I'm not having to do it, but for the next mayor, that means he's going to have to track his mileage because they get reimbursed on mileage at 54 and a half cents per mile, so there will be a budget increase. I like it better when it's a vehicle allowance, because when I run to Country Club of Arkansas and it's three miles down there and back, I don't have to log three miles down. Also, I put 100 miles on my vehicle and never left the City of Mammell before. So, you know, you are going to have an increase, that's, you know, that's going to be 50 bucks right there in one day. So there's going to be a budget increase if you don't allow for a vehicle allowance. I'll just say that, because the budget's going to have, the mileage in the mayor's office is going to have to increase by an estimated amount of what we think the mayor is going to drive.
And do that by past history?
I've never kept records, so there is no past history. Because I got a vehicle allowance. Now, the only mileage that I get reimbursed far as anything above 30 miles. So if I drive my vehicle above 30 miles to a meeting, then I'm reimbursed mileage on that. I was in Lone Oak last week, it's 35 miles there, it's 35 miles back, I didn't charge. I mean, I didn't, I didn't log it in. So, you know, but there's, you know, you make two or three trips to Little Rock, it's 100 miles in a day. So, and I've been to Little Rock more than twice on several occasions for meetings, so that's a consideration. Like I say, I'm glad it's not me, that's on the next mayor, so if that's what y'all choose to do, so, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion to get to, for us to put this in a ordinance? You said you wanted kind of some sort of-
Yes, well, just some confirmation that y'all want to move forward with these salaries in an ordinance. Now, it doesn't mean that you're committing to vote-
Right.
-on those ordinances, that's just, yeah, just to move forward, yes.
Well, I'd like to make, offer that motion that we move forward and start that process and then we can all make our decision as the ordinance comes before us.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to move forward with the task force recommendations-
Yes.
-into an ordinance form. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, motion passes. Alright, next item is mayor's comments. Just a reminder, the first two budget meetings are set for October the 23rd and October the 29th. I know that Councilmember Mosley had an issue with one of those dates, I think it was the second one, was that right?
It may have been November, actually, I was kind of-
Okay, alright.
I think I got a conflict in late-
No, we talked, we discussed it back in August, but I don't remember which day it was.
Check my calendar.
Okay, well, but the 23rd and the 29th, that's when the department heads will be at those two meetings, so. And we will have the budget for y'all at the next council meeting, a hard copy of the budget. But, and I, I think you're right, I think it was the 13th, because we were fighting Thanksgiving, I believe is what it was. Because it was going to be hard for me to move it, because they moved the planning commission meetings up to avoid Thanksgiving and all that, so, yeah, I do remember that now.
Yeah, I think, I think it was the 13th one that's, I'll be out of town, so. Anyway, yeah, I maybe, maybe I can call in again like I did last year.
Okay, alright. So that's just a reminder, the Director Hogan actually covered the fall cleanup, but I will tell you, if you need to determine what your actual days are, it's October the 8th through the 19th. You can go under the Public Works Department website, or it's our website, but go to the Public Works Department. You can look up the Public Works Sanitation Service Brochure and it will give you the actual dates that your neighborhood is being picked up. So you don't have to put it up out on the 8th and we not show up till the 19th in your neighborhood, but but I know I'm always the next, the second week, I know that. So I put them out that weekend in the middle of the thing is what I know, so they do ours on Tuesday of the second week. It's always been there and if they move that on me, I'm in trouble. And then, so be sure and let people know about that, because it's always a big deal. And usually, we only pick up half of what people put out there because there's some citizens drive around and pick the, pick over it first before we get to it. So, if you put something good out there, it may disappear long before the city shows up. And be, don't leave your lawnmower sitting out there and going to get a drink of water either, because it'll be gone when you come back out. That actually happened to my neighbor, they took his weed eater. And so, he laid it down within about 10 foot of the curb, went back in the house, walked back out and it was gone, so, during the fall cleanup. So we blamed it on that, hopefully that's what, someone inadvertently took it. And then, the next item is the Counting on Each Other, Find a Treasure Rumors Sales, October the 6th, at the Community Center from 7:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. And they'll be feeding a pancake breakfast and then they also have hot dogs and hamburgers for lunch, I believe, there. So if you've got a chance and looking for something to pick up so that you can put something else out on the curb, then there you go, so. You can replace something. Planning Commission Report, that will be after the Planning Commission meeting in, at the end of October, so we won't hear from that till November. Councilmember comments? Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to add something to this Community Yard Sale. This is for Counting on Each Other, which is a senior citizens program and they do a lot of good. And our senior program somewhat depends on them. Now, if you have things to bring to this, that you can give to help raise money, it would be appreciated, okay? I'm not on Counting on Each Other, but they're a good organization. The second thing has to do with the Mammell Players. For those that don't know, the Mammell Players is a nonprofit volunteer stage play group here in Mammell and has been for quite a few years. The group is struggling right now. We have lost, I say we, because I'm board advisor, but we have lost our storage room off of Mammell Boulevard. Now, in putting on plays, it's very important that we have a storage room that's full of stuff, okay, for setting up stages. If not, you have to go out and buy it every time. So we have accumulated over the years quite a bit of stuff. Now, this storage unit has been freed 12 feet by 15 feet and it has, it has been, they have allowed us to use it in return for advertising, they've had a change of management philosophy, they don't want to store it anymore. Now, we're running short on money, we don't have that much money to begin with, it's not about making money. And we've got one more month that we can pay on that storage room and that's this month. At the end of this month, we have to move that stuff out. We're trying desperately to find somebody, some organization, maybe a church, somebody that's, that has a little space where we can store this stuff. If you know of someone, please give me a call or you just call me, okay, and I'll make it happen. It would certainly be appreciated. So, the next play is a comedy and I forgot the name of it, but it's supposed to be in the first two weeks of April this coming year, so, okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Scott?
We had the Great Mammell, Arkansas cleanup this last weekend, the weekend before, we got rained out, so we were afraid that the momentum would be lost, but our loyal people showed up, we had about 30 people plus a little handful of kids. And it was, we had a good time, collected a lot of trash, did a lot of cleanup and I just wanted to say that I appreciated everyone who came out and helped with that, our first annual Great Mammell, Arkansas cleanup, I hope.
Thank you very much for helping coordinate that and doing that. Any other councilmember comments?
Councilmember Vaperson?
Spirit of sarcasm, I thought, I would just throw this out there, I know the geese are starting to migrate south and if I could get a cosponsor, I'd love to put an ordinance into effect not to allow them back, so if anybody wants to- give me a cosponsor with that, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Any other councilmember comments? Councilmember Scott?
May I ask who, I'm December on the Planning Commission, am I not?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, that's all, I guess that's all I'm worried about, you've got November, okay, thank you.
She's got October.
October, I believe-
Who's got November?
I'll have to double check.
See, how do you memorize them?
Yes, I'll have to double check, I know she has December because she took Mark's placement, but I'll check on November. It may be Councilmember Williams, but I can't confirm that.
I think I was toward the end of the year, so I think it is me.
Oh, I'll confirm it, thank you.
Okay, now I'm going to ask Ken. City Attorney's comments?
Nothing.
Madam City Clerk?
Just briefly, if anyone still has a 2008 laptop that you're no longer using, please feel free to return it to me and I'll be happy to recycle it. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
I did have one other thing that I didn't, I don't have all the information on it, but I'd mentioned at the last meeting that the land where the old courts building and the old public safety building- and the old public safety building was, we actually did an appraiser appraisal on that property in two thousand and seven, May of two thousand and seven, at that time, because we had an offer from a retail establishment that wanted to locate there, and we were trying to sell it and stay there for twenty-four months while we built something and all that. And there was just concern whether we could make it all work out. So, we did not sell it to that retail establishment at that time. Council was all aware of it, but we went ahead and had an appraisal done at that time, and it came in at one point four million dollars. It's what that appraisal came in. I talked to the company that did that appraisal, and they can update that appraisal, and it's not going to be as expensive as I thought it was going to be. So, I think I can cover that in my budget. So, I'm going to, with the council's permission, move forward with that and go ahead and get that done. And they had a, they reduced the price by forty thousand dollars, because they said the building would have to be torn down, because basically, you couldn't use, you, it wouldn't be purposeful for another use unless you're going to put a fire station and a jail and some other things there. So, that's why they added, put some money in to tear it down also. So, yeah. Councilmember Scott?
Commissioner Todd and I were talking one day, and he mentioned that we think that's the location of the public safety antenna.
It is.
And what are we going to do with that?
It would have to be moved to the police station, and.
But it's not a problem as far as location and distance and all that kind of thing?
No, no, I don't think so. It's just a, it's a logistical thing and a, it'd be a cost thing. There's also a generator down there that we would, we would want to remove from there and probably move to City Hall. And that way, we could use that generator to, to run part of the electrical system here at City Hall. And that would be the plan anyway. So, if, you know, the sale went, if the sale went through, you would have funds to remove that, and you'd also have to allow for some time. I mean, that would be part of the contract, is we need time to remove the antenna. And so, I've already talked to Mike Wilson, our captain at the police department that's in charge of that thing. So, Mike, you know, give me a plan, and let's kind of work on this a little bit to be ready to do that. So. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a curious question. Who is doing the appraisal? Who did the appraisal?
It was Arkansas Appraisals.
Out of?
Little Rock.
Out of Little Rock? Arkansas Appraisals, okay.
Dwight Patterson's company?
Oh, Dwight Patterson. Yeah, I know Dwight. Yeah. Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah.
I want to make sure we had someone good, because that's a complex property over there now.
Right, right.
Dwight can do it.
Yeah. All right.
You didn't need permission to go ahead with an appraisal?
No, because I've got money in my budget. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what, he just, with our blessing.
Yeah, just kind of with your blessing, move forward with it, yeah. But now, if something blows up, I may be coming in here asking for a thousand dollars or something to fix some kind of, I don't know, cop, I don't know, not a copier, but yeah, I don't know what I'd be fixing. But air conditioning unit or something like that, yeah.
Plumbing or something.
All right, that's it. I have no other business, so I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I do have one other thing. If you guys have any meetings scheduled, if you got, could just remember to notify me, so I can make sure the proper committees and entities, officials, press are notified. But if you guys don't communicate with me, I can't do that. So, just remember to copy me, and if you're not sure, it doesn't hurt to send it to me anyway. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of the favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Say no. Meeting adjourned.